Good morning, everyone. This is Crystal Kennedy and we're going to get started here. Thank you for bearing with us while we were swapping out from a previous Teams Live meeting, but this is a meeting of the Assembly's Public Safety Committee, so I will call that meeting to order. It is 11:18 on April the 7th, and I just want to make sure that we have everything being recorded. Okay, we're confirming that, and if we could have roll call Ms. Onis, that would be great.
Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Perez Verdia?
Here.
Mr. Dunbar?
Sure.
Ms. Zalatell?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Present.
Mr. Waddleton?
Here.
Ms. Allard?
Ms. Lefranz?
Here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have our agenda hopefully. I'm sorry, was that Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I'm here. Thanks.
Okay, we will count you as present. Thank you. We have the agenda that should be up on your screen, and if we could raise that up just a tad to see the entire agenda. I just want to make sure that the members see that, and if there's anything we should be adding to the agenda now would be the time. Okay, and I'm not hearing anything else additional to add to the agenda, so we will move on and move right into our first item. We typically do just regular updates from APD, AFD, and the Law Department, and we're going to start that right now with, oh, actually, one thing just for housekeeping purposes that I did need to mention, and that is there was an incorrect, at one point, there was an incorrect participant number that was posted, and I just want to make sure that we give that correct information, and that is the participant number is 907-273-5190, and the participant code is 721227. So hopefully, we have given that information out so that people can participate with us. Okay, so if we can just move right into the agenda then on item number three, the APD regular updates. Chief Dahl or Deputy Chief McCoy or one of you with us?
Hi, this is Chief Dahl, I'm here.
Great, Chief, thank you. Go ahead, you've got some updates for us. Thank you.
Great, thanks. I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. Hopefully that works okay.
That was great, and we see it. Yes, we have it up in front of us. Thank you.
Okay, great. So, all right, it looks like it's working on my end too. So I just wanted to share some quick information about APD 911 average call times over the last few years, mostly because, you know, we've had this ongoing discussion for several years about staffing at APD. We've put a lot of effort into filling out the sworn police officer positions at APD and adding some positions there, and then we moved on talking about non-sworn staffing in various areas of the department where we really weren't meeting the public's expectations when it came to service levels. And one of those was in dispatch with the average wait time for people calling in on 911. So we, starting in probably about 2018, as a community, we started talking about adding those positions, and there is an effort between APD, the administration, and the Assembly to make that happen, and we did, and we've been working away to fill those positions, and we've been fairly successful over the last couple of years, and we're finally starting to see some results. So if you look at the chart that I have up on the screen, it shows you sort of, it shows you the 911 wait times as a line across the screen, sort of month to month since about 2014, and you can see really they started kind of slowly creeping up over the years, especially in 2018 into 2019. We saw some wait times of over 21 seconds, and that's pretty significant. It doesn't seem like a long time, although 21 seconds can be a very long time if you're waiting on hold for someone to answer 911, but of course, these are averages, so we saw some, you know, the outliers were significantly higher. And the national sort of best practice for 911 answer times is 10 seconds or better generally, and so we wanted to be back below that. So you can see especially over the, you know, we saw some declines in 2020, and then it spiked up a little bit, but really over the last eight months or so, we've really seen a steady decline. In the last couple of months now, we've been below that 10-second average, and we hope to continue that trend. We do have some open positions in dispatch right now that are just sort of natural vacancies as people retire and move on to other things, and we're in the process of filling those. But that's it. Generally, I just kind of wanted to show everyone what this looks like, and that we're starting to see results from the efforts we've all been putting into addressing that issue that we know is important to the community.
Thank you, Chief. I actually have a question that might be a little aside on that one, but I think it was maybe a year or so, might have been a little bit more, but we had some issues with 911 even being available. It was kind of some local communication hiccups. Have we had any other instances where 911 has actually been unavailable, or do we think there are any challenges with that that we need to be concerned about in the future? Thanks.
No, thank you for that question. That's a good question. So I wanted to sort of point out that we never had a problem with APD or Anchorage's 911 system. Our system was always up. One of the telecommunications providers had a system problem that prevented some of their subscribers from reaching 911, and it might seem like a slight difference, but from our perspective, it's substantial because our system was always up and running. It's just one of the telco providers had an issue, and that was actually ultimately an incident that occurred in the Lower 48 where a fiber optic line was cut and affected the way the system works in Alaska for one of the providers. And they came and briefed the department, and I think ultimately, the administration and possibly the Assembly at one point about how that occurred, and they have since addressed that with one of their service providers. So it's a really long way of saying, we haven't experienced anything like that since then. It wasn't APD or the municipality's system error, and the provider has explained it, and we believe that they have done some things to make it less likely in the future.
Great, thank you for that explanation and the difference. I do appreciate when we know we can assure the public that our 911 system is working, and it's even better to be able to tell them now that the response time is even better. So my thanks to APD on working on that and getting those call numbers down, so appreciate that. Anything else then, Chief Dahl, that you wanted to update us on?
No, ma'am. I think that'll do it for this go around.
Thank you. And any questions from the members? I'm not seeing anything in the chat, but I thought I would at least open it up real quick if there was anybody that had a question. Okay, then we will move right on to the Anchorage Fire Department. And Chief Hedrick, are you with us here this morning?
Good morning, everyone. I sure am, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to update you on where we are with Anchorage Fire Department. I'm very pleased to report that we finally got our reports to the community out. It went out earlier, about middle of last week, and it's posted to our website with big bold red letters that say "new" on it, so hopefully, members of the public can see it. And we shared the PDF version with the Assembly and I think members of the administration. We did find, after, of course, we look at something 1,000 times, and we did find a data error with our response data that was corrected, so the hard copy that you should be each getting a copy of for the Assembly members, and the one that is now posted to the website is the corrected version. So if anyone, that's really our biggest update, is we finally got our numbers out, and we are available for any questions if anybody has any.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from the members? Mr. Perez Verdia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I think Ms. Zalatell was in line before me. My phone.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Perez Verdia. We're all here in chambers and working through this technology together.
Right, sorry.
Chief Hedrick, I was wondering if you could provide a little bit of a timing update on the mobile crisis team for me?
I would be happy to. So as of yesterday, we started the interviews for one of the positions that's been approved, which was our admin position for the mobile crisis response team, and so we should have results from that shortly. We, the municipality and classifications and HR has finally released the mental health clinician two position, so we will be getting those posted hopefully by April 12th. We'll have that out and running. We are still waiting for the clinician one, which is the social worker case manager position that we're hoping to fill, so we haven't seen that out of classification, nor have we seen the supervisor position. So we're still working on that and working with classification on questions. The rest of the positions are in process of being filled. We have requested to move some money around from labor to non-labor because we, since we haven't filled the positions, we want to make sure and utilize the entire budget for everything the team needs. So we have a request in for that, to make that work happen, and we are still on target, hesitantly, to get at least a portion of the positions filled and up and running by May, but I think we're looking at that June 1st deadline for all of the positions if we get the social workers done pretty soon. So things are still in process, protocols are still in process, and we're getting pretty close to having those done, and I think that everything else is moving as we expected. Just the expected delay with classification, we are adding two completely new types of positions that the municipality has never had before, so those reviews take quite a bit.
Great, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Zalatell. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Perez Verdia?
Thanks. And actually, that was a question I was going to ask, but as long as I have you for a minute, you mentioned that the report is up on your website. Is there anything that you would like to highlight from that report? Is there anything that we want to make sure is mentioned in this meeting from that report?
Well, two things I think that we are especially proud of. One is that even though there was a pandemic in 2020, our fire inspectors were able to get out and complete more inspections of facilities, along with making sure they were compliant with all of the changes we put in front of them during the pandemic, and they did an outrageous amount of work. So that's definitely a significant increase, and to get them out in the field, really doing those inspections to make sure the facilities open to the public were safe. Because we, obviously, just like everyone else, we weren't just concerned about COVID and virus exposure, we're still worried about fire safety and collapse and things along those lines. So they were still doing their main job, and they did more of it. Other things declined, but that is one thing that they were able to accomplish, and we are still on track for a very slow increase for call volume, but we've noticed with the last, due to the pandemic, we did see a decrease in call volume, which gave us all a little bit of a break. It's only 430 calls less than we normally go on, but boy, anytime that we can reduce the times that our community is having an emergency, the better. So we'll continue to reinforce our community risk reduction and hope that we can get those numbers to either stay or plateau or start to decline.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Perez Verdia. Anything else then, Chief?
I'm in the queue.
Yep, I just now saw that too. So, Mr. Constance?
Yeah, thanks, Chief. So the question I have relates to the community outreach piece for the mobile crisis team. You know, the last time we talked about the subject, it was we need to get a little more developed before we do outreach, but we have a plan where we're going to do that. I would love to know the status of that. I'm afraid that if you've already gone through the process of determining what the positions are, how they're all going to correlate, that the opportunity for community input might have passed in the initial phase and might actually set us up for some problems in the future.
I don't think we ever had an intent of having a public process to inform the positions that we were going to fill, because we've been very clear about what those positions are, were going to be throughout the budgetary process. Where we are including the public comment piece is how they do their work, and so that will come in. We have to have people in place before we can have those public outreach meetings, and right now, we're still with firefighter Mike Riley, the team of one who's still continuing to do core work as we all put together how we're going to actually run and implement the mobile crisis response team. So we're still early on. We hope that when we get the staffed positions in, that's when we will look at that public process and get input for how we conduct our business. So that's really where we're focusing that public piece on.
All right, that sounds good, and I think that there are two kinds of public outreach that would be wise for the department to contemplate. One is that more broad, let's have a meeting where we invite lots of people in to talk about what we're doing, but there are some very targeted experts who are in the community, and their expertise is whether they have a history in one subject matter or another, or where they live, they have a deep knowledge of the challenges. And so I would again suggest, if it is at all possible, it might be wise that the earliest possible opportunity to broach those conversations with a very small group of very directly impacted individuals, because there's that old saying in political fundraising, Emily's List said it, early money is like yeast, and I think early input is also like yeast in that the more you hear at the beginning, the better the impact it can be towards helping meet the needs. So thank you, and I'm looking forward to more development.
Thank you, Mr. Constance. I have Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Chief Hedrick, I was wondering, I remember several months ago, we did, someone had asked how many of the firefighters had tested positive for the virus, and, but I don't believe we've got an update on that in recent months. Do you know how many of your employees have caught the virus at this point?
Stand by just one second, sir, and I will, I just got the report this morning. I just want to verify it before I share.
I know a month or so ago, you said that you were, that the PPE had been very effective, and so, and I was glad to hear that, but, you know, I just wondered if it was, how effective it has been, so.
Okay, it looks like for the department, we have confirmed only 37 people were positive for COVID.
And that's over the last year?
Yes, that's through, from when this started last March, all the way through, and we have a total staff right now of 416. So that includes, that 416, there's, is probably a total of 430, because we've had quite a few retirees that would have been exposed last year and stuff, but yes, 37 is our number.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I don't see anyone else in the chat, but I wanted to make sure that if there were any other member questions, that we got to those, but also want to make sure, Chief, that was, that you had for updates, or if there was anything else you wanted to bring up.
Nope, I think that's everything that I have for today. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chief. And we're going to have a little more discussion with both Chief Dahl and Chief Hedrick a little bit further down in the agenda, so I know they're not going away anytime soon, but, so we'll move on then to the Law Department. Sarah Stanley, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead, you've got a couple things.
Thank you. Yes, first of all, just a trial update. Trials are going to start April 20th. However, the first week is going to be one case that's going to go, and I believe it'll be the first jury trial in Anchorage in over a year. Once the, some of the kinks get ironed out in that first trial, we expect that trials will be up to full capacity. It will take a while to get through the backlog of trial cases, but that's where we are right now currently. I also wanted to tell you about some proposed DV code changes, domestic violence code changes, that we are working on. We will in the next month be submitting to you some proposed code changes. I don't have the language for you today, but we have been working on it, and I wanted to give you sort of a summary of what we have so far. The first code change would be to our abuse of a child ordinance, which is 810030. In 2015, the Court of Appeals wrote an unpublished opinion in which it criticized aspects of this code and identified some of the unintentional consequences of the way it was drafted, parts of it were drafted back in 2000. So our code change proposals will be an attempt to fix those problems the Court of Appeals has identified. For example, if someone can prove that it was part of reasonable parental discipline, it's okay to torture your child under our code, and that's an extreme example, but we want to avoid having possibilities like that in our code, understandably. Another issue is that it's an affirmative defense in our code, that it's reasonable parental discipline, and that's problematic for the Court of Appeals because the burden shouldn't be on the defendant to prove that. So we're going to try to address some of those issues. Another issue with that code is currently, it's sort of partly subjective standard. If the parent believes, the intent of the parent is something that is weighed when you're deciding whether discipline was reasonable, and so there's a mixed subjective-objective standard. And I can answer questions on these further when they're actually submitted to you, but I'm just trying to give you a heads up. The next one that we're looking at changing is the harassment statute, which is 810110. We want to modernize it a little bit, to, you know, prohibit not just distributing photographs, pornographic photographs, but also images and videos. We also want to make it a crime to threaten to distribute them. We see that that's what happens more in domestic violence situations, that someone is coerced into doing something because of the threat of publication of images like that. Another, another one that we are looking at changing is just a little tiny change to our criminal mischief code to make it, which is damaging property of another. We want to change it from intentional to reckless as the level of intent that's required. Another one which we want to create, there's a code we want to create, and we don't have a name for it yet, but basically, it's sort of domestic violence kidnapping in place. And what it would be is that it would make it illegal for someone to prevent someone from leaving their house through force or coercion. Currently, that's not a crime, so if the controlling abuser wants to keep their significant other in the house and uses force, coercion, whatever, that's currently not a crime. So that's another one we're looking at. So we're hoping to get this to, you know, through the formal channels, through Civil and to you by the, by the beginning of May, so that it can be looked at for the Assembly meetings in May. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Stanley. I think I have a question for you from Ms. Zalatell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Ms. Stanley, when you bring forward the proposals for the Assembly to consider, it'd be great to have not just the ordinance changes, but some background on the why and where the changes come from, just for some context. You've raised a number of intriguing ideas, but I would, because that's initially where my questions are going to go, so I just wanted to preview that request. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely, and even if some of those answers are not in the formal memo from Civil, I would be happy to also write up some sort of less formal explanation of each change.
Thank you so much. Thank you both. Are there any other questions from Ms. Stanley?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Constance.
Thank you. It's more of a philosophical question. I was in a conversation last night with a number of people from across a variety of kind of partisan backgrounds, and the topic of the court's suspension of jury trials and the court's suspension of access from attorneys into the correctional system where they're being held while they're waiting for trials raises quite a bit of concerns about due process and about kind of what some at the table argued seems to be a path that defense attorneys should be arguing, that they shouldn't even be prosecuted after having to sit and wait so long. Now, I understand these decisions were made by the courts locally, at the state, and nationally, but can you kind of just have a little philosophical conversation about the impacts of that and how we should be looking at this as we move forward into normalizing back into the stream of the correctional injustice system?
So first of all, with, yes, of course, it's problematic that people's due process rights to speedy trial have been delayed, and that's been a problem both for defendants and for victims, because victims also by statute have a right to have these things wound up in a timely manner. It also makes prosecution harder when it's delayed, so it's bad for both defense and prosecution. And I know the court system has, you know, the, you know, the Chief Justice and the Supreme Court have been sort of agonizing over those court orders where they continue to extend Rule 45, which is the speedy trial rule. I can say for our misdemeanor cases, first of all, they've changed, the court has sort of, and the bail schedule have changed, so for the same crime that used to keep someone in prison, in, sorry, in pre-trial detention longer because of COVID, they've lowered the bail schedule, so it's actually easier for people to get out than it was pre-COVID. So people are actually, have lower standards for being able to get out of jail, and I think the judges are, just, this is anecdotal, but the judges are also, when we have bail hearings, trying to find, you know, least restrictive means to protect the community so that people are not in custody, where you're right, they, it's, it was hard, it was impossible for a while for them to talk to their defense attorneys. Now they can, but it's still hard. They have to make appointments or phone calls. I'm not completely clear on that process. So I think everyone in the different parts of the system have been trying to minimize the unfortunate due process implication, but I got to say for our misdemeanor cases, I would, I, I mean, I'm sure they're out there, but there are very few cases on our, in our, on our caseload where someone would actually have been in jail since last March. Just, I would actually be surprised if there were any, but I don't, you know, I haven't combed through all of our open cases, because what I'm experiencing is that they are actually trying to do the least restrictive means to get them out, so that, yes, they don't, their trial rights are still being violated, speedy trial, but at least they're not sitting in jail where they do have trouble accessing their attorney. I don't know if that was what you wanted, we're asking.
Yeah, I think that's fair, and it's just an area of important kind of philosophical contemplation for us all. And then I have a question I'm starting to ask everywhere, and it's not a question to answer now, but it's a question to start chewing on, and that is, so we're coming out of a pandemic hopefully soon, sooner than later, and everything has changed, and some things must by virtue of the law go back to how they were, but I would love for your department to kind of do a little bit of a SWOT analysis of what changed and how we responded well, and what changed and how we could have responded better, and then And then what we need to take forward with us from this learning experience of shutting down and the process of responding to COVID in the context of your work. So I certainly don't need a contemporaneous, extemporaneous answer, but it's something I'd like people to start thinking about.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Constant. Thank you, Ms. Stanley. Anything else? I don't have anyone else in the queue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on then to our new business. We have with us today the Girdwood Fire and Rescue Chief and Chief Michelle Weston. And welcome, Chief Weston. I realize you have a little bit of an update, a report that you would like to give about the Girdwood Fire and Rescue Department. So if, you are on, and go ahead. And if we need to share the screen, we can do that.
Awesome. Yeah, I'd love to share the screen. I have just a short presentation because I realize not everybody might know what we do and how Girdwood is unique. And so I'd like to do that. So thank you so much for having the opportunity. And thank you to Chief Hetrick for suggesting that I do this presentation. So I requested control.
You just need to share your screen. There you go.
Okay. Can everybody see that? All right. All right. So again, thank you. I wanted to tell you about our service area. Our service area is Girdwood Fire Service Area, Portage Valley, Seward Highway, mile 50 to 105. From 50 to 75, we're actually in the Kenai Borough, but we're there under cooperative agreement. Turnigan Arm, 20 Mile Plaza River, Turnigan Pass. Again, that's under, in the Kenai Borough, under a cooperative agreement. And then we have a dual response area with AFD to Indian, which is outside, Indian and Bird and Rainbow is outside of the fire service area. But it is in area-wide EMS. Our funding comes from the Girdwood Valley Fire Service Area and then also from area-wide EMS. And our other sources of revenue are Type 1 deployments for command staff, Kenai Borough and City of Whittier when we do responses there. And then fundraising for rescue equipment, which occurs out with, because primarily, our rescue equipment occurs outside, rescue services occurs outside the fire service area. And so we're a little unique. One issue that we're unique about is we're all paid part-time. And then we have some staff, we have four hours of transport times for EMS. So an ambulance, when it goes out of the valley, is often gone for three to four hours. So that's a significant utilization on the two ambulances that we have. Our, we have a high number of traumatic injuries from vehicle accidents and outdoor recreation. We're a tourist destination with heavy trail and backcountry use and increased pressure to open more access. And we've definitely seen that since COVID. We have high home values. The average home is over $500,000. And they're larger homes than they were 20 years ago. And so that definitely impacts the ability of us to find out of our population of basically 2,000 firefighters who are able to, A, afford to have a second job, basically, at the fire department working. We do service the fire, the Seward Highway Safety Corridor. And in summer, there's weekend traffic backups, where traffic basically stops, very much like an LA freeway type of situation. But it's been a lot better since the Anchorage Police Department have been patrolling our corridor. We interface on a daily basis with three law enforcement entities, APD, Whittier, and Alaska State Troopers. And then we also often interface on a daily basis with three dispatches. So with the Anchorage Fire Dispatch, Soldatina Dispatch, and then also with Whittier Dispatch, which is dispatched out of Cordova. We have, basically, the State Trooper Search and Rescue Coordination Trooper is on speed dial for us because we coordinate a lot for RCC responses in areas that we cannot reach patients for backcountry rescues. And then we also have some target hazards, like the Girdwood Airport, the railroad. We often take patients off of the railroad, off of railcars when they come by in tourist season, Alaska Resort. And then we're also going to also have that new Nordic Spa that's opening up at the beginning of July. We have large events that bring a lot of people into the service area, such as Slush Cup, Forest Fair. And that's an extra 5,000 people a day in the service area. And then half the, half the homes in Girdwood have traditionally been second homes. And those, in the past number of years, all converted into, or majority have converted into nightly and weekend rentals. And so that's a lot of extra people in the service area that might not live here or might be tourists that might have medical emergencies. And then we also have the other unique feature, which is wacky weather. So we often are working in blizzard warnings or avalanche dangers, the big winds that we have on the highway. And so you have to be a little crazy to work here because you're often outside in very cold weather in very strong winds. And so here is a typical picture of what it looks like from my command rig going to a call. And so just bringing you back, Girdwood Volunteer Fire Department's been here for 62 years. And we used to be part of the city of Girdwood. And in Auxiliary Ordinance from '74, firefighters were paid $4 an hour for training and $5 an hour for response. In talking to the original, one of the original Assistant Chiefs down here from '74, I tried to get members to volunteer out of the community. It's always been difficult. In the '70s, people were lured here because of the ability to get water and free showers. In 1996, here's when I started. There's me. We were auxiliary members of Anchorage Fire Department. That was after unification. We were trained by AFD, paid by Anchorage Fire Department. We had one paid chief who was also Parks and Rec support. And we were paid $9 an hour for training and $10 an hour for response. And our call volume at that time was around 300 calls, and we had 14 firefighters. Here we are, this is last night. We were doing a cardiac training. We're now a nonprofit. We'd have some paid positions, myself, the deputy chief, the captains, two of us, and an admin officer. And then the firefighters are paid $11 an hour. So it really has not gone up that much in 20 years. And they're on call for 48 hours a month. Our call volume is 400 to 500 calls a year. It was 400 last year, or 399, typically a year when the ski resort is open and full. And it's not COVID, it's around 500. And we oscillate around 50, we end up getting around 50 firefighters that we have. Here's everybody. One of our, and this is an older picture, pre-COVID. That's why nobody's got a mask on. And a number of these people have actually also transitioned to AFD. One of the challenges we have is the fact that we train people, but then they're very quickly recruited by AFD or the Kenai Peninsula Fire Departments or elsewhere to go work. But one of the lovely things that we, I can be very proud about saying is that we have 30% female firefighters membership and, and through the command staff as well and in the officer level. And I think part of that is also to Chief Hetrick. There's good role models out there. And so, you know, there's that, if you can see it, you can be it. And I think that we are fostering a very, probably the highest level of female membership in Alaska right now, and I'm super proud of that. We also started a couple of years ago, a Girdwood Cert Team. And this is a number of community individuals that come out when we need extra support on emergencies and help out with traffic control and things like that. And they're all trained in light search and rescue. And we've got them trained up to do Red Cross sheltering if that's needed. And they're just a lovely group of people. They are not paid. They meet once a month. And we train them on different emergency management topics. And so, you know, even, fire's in our name, but we have very few fires in Girdwood, truthfully. We are, you know, always challenged to meet the NFPA guidelines for staffing based on our funding level. But we're working, trying to work towards fixing that. And part of that will be in this next year, hopefully, improving the hourly wage for the members. Just, I'm going to go through just a different, just show you the variety of stuff that we do. Turnigan Pass accidents are, this is a semi, this was a, this was a call where a suicidal individual drove up from Seward, came to Girdwood, decided not to complete their mission in Girdwood, and then drove back down the highway and immediately, and purposely took out or went into the semi, and, but lived. But we've, when we go up here, we are frequently working with LifeMed to transport the patient because that's the best possible outcome if LifeMed or Guardian can transport. And from here, it's about an hour and a half to the closest hospital if we're doing ground transportation. And often, these are challenges here. There's no cell communications. And so people might have driven a half an hour away from an accident to call in an accident. And then, so there'll be a half an hour delay before the call, the accident is even reported, before emergency services start off. And we work, we, I talk in a weekly basis with the Bear Creek Fire Chief as they are the other extrication services on the other side of Turnigan Pass. And so us and Cooper Landing and then Hope EMS comes out and we all meet and coordinate responses. There's a lot of pressure right now on the Forest Service to open up more areas in Turnigan Pass. There's a, the Tin Can area is going to have a new 84 lot, parking lot, separated, and more improvements coming up there. So there's a lot of pressure right now for increased access and backcountry access for skiers and snow machiners in this area. We also, because we have, of course, the main highway corridor, we respond to a lot of commercial vehicle accidents. This is a tanker full of hot oil, which spilled at Tsavo. We have an airport. I don't know if anybody knew that, that we have a super nice, very scenic airport. And so occasionally, we'll have an airport emergency. Backcountry rescue, people are going farther and deeper into the backcountry, which is still unfortunately sort of the front country in terms of area-wide EMS. Byron Glacier, we are often responding down here to Byron Glacier for different events. And then there's a lot of pressure also right now on Portage Valley, especially Portage Lake. Any given winter day, that's a nice day, you see between 50 and 300, depending if it's a weekend, people out recreating on the ice at any time. And there's Forest Services right now putting up a cell tower so people can actually have communication. Back, it's another issue, trail access. As the trails are being more developed in Girdwood and we're opening up more terrain areas for mountain biking and, of course, the advent of e-bikes, we're seeing people in areas where they normally traditionally wouldn't go because they might not have the fitness level, but now they're there. This is one of the accidents that happened at the Girdwood tram. And this was a RCC coordination. The patient was airlifted up. One of these, one of the issues with these accidents or access, right? So for us, we ended up fundraising for two e-bikes so we could get our personnel in quicker. And then we're coordinating oftentimes with the RCC to get people airlifted out from these locations. We also, our members also have to be proficient in rope rescue. We do water and ice rescue as needed. And so that's something that's sort of unfunded for us, but we do. And so we fundraise for all of our water rescue equipment. It's coming, as I was talking to the Forest Service Ranger the other day, you know, as there's this increased pressure in Portage Lake also for summer recreation, I asked him how he expect, who was going to rescue those people? Because, again, we have one sort of old, underpowered boat. We're looking to fundraise to get two water platforms so we have at least a safety measure of a second platform. We have at times, in recent years, had two water rescues going on at the same time, around 5 o'clock on a Saturday. And so we can be incredibly busy. And so we also, that's our boat there. We also coordinate with Department of Transportation. This is our, this is a DOT joint exercise we had. We simulated an avalanche burial over here of vehicles and then worked towards working, our work with DOT on coordination of those types of events. Occasionally, we might be called on mutual aid to Whittier. This is the Whittier Dock Fire. And then Forest Fair. Obviously, this is pre-COVID. But there's a lot of people that come to Girdwood. And when they come to Girdwood for Forest Fair, they also bring their own set of challenges. Our call volume over a three-day Forest Fair in 2018 was 66 calls over three days. And we basically set up a command center for this. Basically, we see a lot of inebriated people, people who might have mixed drugs when they shouldn't have, and then heat exhaustion. And we try and also sort of tone down our seriousness during Forest Fair. And so we try and take our old shirts and tie-dye them so we sort of fit in better with Forest Fair. Public education is a huge part of what we do. And Girdwood is definitely a community-based fire department. And so we do a lot of community things that normally probably other fire departments wouldn't do. One of the things we do is we are the sort of de facto dog contact. I mean, this might sound silly. But if there's a loose dog in Girdwood, because animal control is so far away, oftentimes, people will bring them to the fire station and we end up with a lot of dogs in the fire station waiting for unification before animal control comes down or basically their owners remind or realize they're missing. This is Ryan. Ryan is now working in dispatch as a 911 dispatcher. We also occasionally help Noah with whales. This is a whale stranding that happened in Turnigan Arm a few years ago. We also help the clinic with flu clinic, flu shots. This is this year. And then there's a community Thanksgiving. A number of years ago, the Girdwood community realized that there was a lot of service workers that were not getting, were working on Thanksgiving but might not be getting Thanksgiving dinner. And so there's now a Thanksgiving dinner in Girdwood at the fire station that didn't happen last year because of COVID. But 400 people come through the fire department for dinner the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And the food bank donates, works with the local Girdwood Food Bank. And they donate 25 turkeys. And there's a large turkey frying operation that happens outside the fire station. And I haven't shown you a lot of death and destruction or big fire pictures. I sort of showed you a lot of people pictures because really, it is truly the strength of our workforce, is the heart of the community. And we are very blessed to have everybody volunteering. And we have really good people that work for us and really care about the, the community and the people we serve. COVID's been challenging for us. We're very thankful that we were able to work, that Anchorage Fire Department gave us protective gear. And Chief Juneman with Anchorage Fire has been wonderful in keeping us apprised of all the changes with COVID. And we're just thankful, thankful that we have wonderful people that we work with. And Dr. Levy also has been wonderful. And then what changed with us with COVID was that the fire station was on lockdown. And like I mentioned, here at the fire station, we have probably, I would say, conservatively, five to 10 people that come to the fire station on a daily basis to just ask questions or they call the fire station with questions. When COVID, when lockdown happened and we weren't allowed to have people in the fire station, it was kind of a change to the community. But everybody adapted. They now just come to my window and it's like a drive-through. And so people just come to the window, bang on the window, and ask questions through the window. And that seems to have worked quite well. And so our strengths, I think that we're resilient, professional, and forward-leaning. We have a great team that's really, has good teamwork. We have a lot of paid staff that come out of the woodwork in the middle of the night, even after they've already worked a shift to help out on fires. We have a lot of skills and knowledge transferred between members. And we have enthusiasm for learning, compassion for patients. We're COVID-conscious and everybody's super flexible because, as you can see, we do a lot of different things. We do have some challenges. We, right now, are under heavy competition from other departments who are all trying, and COVID clinics, they're all trying to hire everyone away. And so trying to keep everybody here. We are looking for funding for firefighter, pre-fire, pre-hire medicals and physicals to meet medicals and physicals to meet NFPA standards. We need to increase our fire service area funding to also meet NFPA staffing standards. We're looking for funding for Engine 41, Rescue 41, and three command vehicles. Engine 41 has been approved by the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. Rescue 41, it was concluded on Prop 3, so I'm very hopeful. I haven't got my fingers on across yet for that. We're going to start fundraising for water rescue boats this year. We have continued problems with blocked hydrants and roads. Here's a picture, example of, this is what it looks like during spring skiing, everybody, and Forest Fair. Everybody likes to parks on the road, but nobody ever remembers that emergency vehicles or ambulances have to get through. It's a constant challenge. Incredible tourist and backcountry trail development happening. So, you know, that's going to be pressure. And also the Nordic Spa coming online, the new Portage Lake and other things, other trail system in Portage that's being developed. Again, no cell service in Turnigan Pass. And then, as a fire chief, I actually have no, because I work for a nonprofit, I have no enforcement authority for fire code. So that brings some challenges. So if I need anything enforced, I have to call Whittier Police to enforce it. And that's my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief Weston. Wow, that was a lot to digest. And obviously, it speaks very well to how busy a department and versatile a department that you have out there in Girdwood. I do have some questions for you, so I want to start with Mr. Dunbar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming, Chief. So in recent months, I've been informed by members of the Girdwood community, not you, but other folks, that there might be an issue with reimbursement between municipality of Anchorage and the Girdwood Volunteer Fire Department. Do you want to speak to that at all?
I will say that we are in contract negotiations with AFD, and Chief Hetrick could probably address it better. But that's what's been going on at the moment. As I mentioned, we have challenges. We are a paid depart, you know, a paid part-time department, so we have payroll obligations. So we're very different than Chugiak, who have an amazing volunteer base to pull from. And so with us, our challenges are maintaining payroll and, you know, just we have a lot of calls. And so our call volume is three to five calls a day, which, you know, it's very less than Chugiak, but we pay people. So we have staffing challenges. So what we're looking for and working with Anchorage Fire Department on is changing, you know, improving the contracts so there's more funding, both in EMS and fire. So we're able to actually have staffing for, to meet the demands that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have Ms. Zalatell who has a question for you, too.
Thank you. Wow, you guys do everything down there. Of particular interest, what are the community's mental health needs? Or how often do you encounter mental health crises in your service area? And what resources do you have or need to address such calls?
So I was super excited to see the core team coming online. We do have a number of mental health challenges in our community. Some are related to substance abuse issues. Some are really are true behavioral health issues and then, you know, the normal collection. I would say that it's challenging. We do respond to calls. We, you know, in the Girdwood Fire Service Area, it's the Whittier Police Service Area. And so there's, the challenges we have with our policing right now is that, you know, we may, somebody may call and Whittier might be 35 minutes away. And so we will be waiting for Whittier to come to assist us with a behavioral health emergency. And so that is a challenge unto itself. And so you can imagine, if it's a significant behavioral health emergency, there's a delay there in when we're here or not. The community as a whole is very compassionate towards community members that might have psychological breaks or community, or mental health challenges. And so typically, if there's a person that's obviously acting strangely on the bike path or elsewhere, all of a sudden, I'll get inundated with calls or text, personal text messages. People will drive to the station and they'll be very protective of that person and asking us to help. And then we'll contact Whittier Police to assist us often. And so I am excited and hope that the core team will be able to expand down this way as well. My understanding is the Girdwood Clinic is being rebuilt and possibly will be expanding its also mental health capacity. But we definitely have a need, just like we have a need for domestic violence services here, which isn't really talked about very much. And so those are two, two areas in the community where I think that we could have assistance would be domestic violence support and also mental health. And it's not just here. I would say there's also at least a few individuals in the Turnigan Arm communities, such as Burden Indian, that also need the services of a core team type support.
Thank you. And if you have any data on the calls received, if that could be sent out to us, that would be really helpful. I appreciate the answer. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah. And so most of our data, I think, is aggregated in with Anchorage Fire Department's data. So it should also be reflected in that.
Thank you, Ms. Zalatell. Thank you, Chief Weston. I have one more question for you from Dean Gates. Dean, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Weston, I wanted to ask, I guess you mentioned at the end about having new enforcement authority. I guess I did want to say offhand that fire code does apply in good word as well as our response. The question is enforcement authority, though, and you mentioned fire code. Is there some other particular type of enforcement authority that you think is needed or a gap? And I guess one thing I thought of is open burning, but how does it work?
Yeah. And well, you know, being a nonprofit fire chief, it has, without authority, has its challenges. So, you know, when we have people who park in fire lanes, I can't enforce it. I have to call Whittier Police, right? When we have people blocking hydrants, I can't enforce that. I have to call Whittier Police. So it's more like burning, burning, you know, blocked roads, burning blocked roads, hydrants. And then additionally, and so, you know, you have to wait for somebody to come 30 minutes or more to write a ticket under a state statute because they can't enforce, because Whittier Police does not enforce municipal code. And then additionally, we have a lot of multifamily units. Some of them are rentals, some of them are not. We've, we are under state fire prevention, not municipal. And so there's not really any enforcement on any code violations or anything that might be happening in a multifamily, because I don't believe they're being inspected. And so that's kind of a challenge. So the way we can get around this is I can ask nicely for people to, you know, clear out the area in front of the emergency exit or whatever. But I don't really have any enforcement authority to that level. And so it concerns me when we have so many, you know, multifamily and a large transient population through the multifamily that we can't really enforce any, you know, we can't, they're not being inspected. That concerns me. Additionally, you know, I'd like all the units, all the multifamily units and businesses to have Knox boxes. And that's not necessarily the case. Some, some property managers of multifamily don't want to do that. I think that's not the best business practice. And so it would be lovely to be able to have, you know, the good, you know, Anchorage has a strong fire code. And I wish in the future, you know, at some point, it works towards those also being able to be enforced in the Girdwood Vet Fire Service Area. Again, that's my perspective as a fire professional. I'm sure that there's other community members that don't want to have enforcement authority given to the fire department.
Thanks, Ms. Weston. I know the issue is sticky, but I appreciate your response.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Thank you, Chief Weston. I don't have any more folks in the chat, but I do want to give one last call to members if they do have one more question or thought before we let you go here. So if there are any members that have any questions, please speak up.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity.
Before Michelle goes, Waddleton here. Thank you, Michelle, for your great work at the fire department.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Waddleton. And I echo that, too. I just really appreciate you coming to this meeting and giving us such a great picture of all the things that are going on in the Girdwood Fire and Rescue Department. And really hope that you will also tell all of your volunteers out there that we thank them as well, because it's obvious that there's a lot that we rely on them for. So appreciate that, too. So thank you very much, Chief Weston.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye. So we'll move on to the, what's listed in the agenda as the APD and AFD focuses and goals, past, present, and future. And, you know, this really, I hope, will just be a little bit of a open conversation, because one of the things that came up while we were having our public safety pre-meeting was that I just felt like both with Chief Dahl and Chief Hetrick both retiring this year, that they were probably getting to the point where they were being a little more reflective on kind of the last several years that they had spent as the heads of those departments. And I really wanted them to have a chance to just talk a little bit about what their goals had been when they first got on as, in the positions that they've been in for the last three or four years, and kind of what their priorities were when they took over. And once they started talking about that, and then I also asked what they thought they wanted to make sure the department didn't lose sight of when they left, because there's always a tendency for department heads to have their, kind of their focus, their thing. And anyway, as they were talking, it really got to be an interesting conversation. And I thought that it would be really good for the rest of this committee to hear more about the thoughts that both Chief Hetrick and Chief Dahl had. So I'm going to kind of open that up to both of them right now. Actually, right now, what I really would like to do, just a housekeeping thing, is we started this meeting 10 minutes late, so I'm pretty sure we're going to go over our 12:30 deadline. So if I could get somebody to extend us now for 10 minutes, I won't have to make that interruption as we get this conversation going.
Move to extend.
And a second? Second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any objection to extending for 10 minutes? All right, not hearing any objections. So we're going to just extend to 12:40. So anyway, since we've kind of been on the fire and rescue side of the equation, I'm going to open this up to Chief Hetrick first. And like I said, Chief, if you would just kind of give us a little bit of thought about where you were three years ago and what you wanted your focus to be on the department, and how you'd like to see the department continue on after you retire this year. So Chief Hetrick, go ahead.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm going to go back a little bit farther because I did not start with AFD as the typical firefighter and come up through the ranks, actually joined the organization at the Assistant Chief level. And my focus, and one of the reasons why I pursued a position with Anchorage Fire Department, was to help this organization and what translates then to the rest of the state with firefighter safety and survival. We have a significant number of people in the state who suffer from injuries, both mental health, emotional health, and physical injuries, and exposures to carcinogens and stuff, just for the work that we do. And I always felt that there were things that we could do as an organ, that AFD could do as an organization, which then translates to as setting a good example for the other departments around the state to keep our people safer. There's only about 6,000 emergency responders in the state of Alaska, and we, we all know each other and we have to take care of each other. So it was really important to me to join AFD so that I could help with that. And that has been my number, my number one goal was I came in as, to the department and as the chief, is to improve firefighter safety and survival. And that, in all levels, with our behavioral health program and with our decon procedures to reduce our exposure to carcinogens, and focusing on things that reduce injuries from patient moving and lifting injuries and a wide variety of things. That's really been my focus. And the other half of the coin is the best way to improve safety and health for our firefighters is to improve safety and health for the entire community. So community risk reduction, public education, injury prevention has always been something very, very near and dear to my heart. So as I came into the chief's position, that was a big focus for me, is to continue and actually expand our ability to have dedicated community risk reduction professionals in the organization so that we could provide good education, knowledge, and skills to the community so that they could reduce the instances of injuries and emergencies that they're exposed to. If we reduce those numbers, then it actually makes firefighters' lives safer. So those are my two biggest goals, our firefighter safety, survival, and overall community risk reduction, so that our community is safer. And I think we've done a good job of that. I'm hoping that the next administration, as they come in, continues that march towards increased injury prevention, fire safety, education, and community risk reduction in all areas, because I think that's truly the, the best thing for the fire department to be doing. It has been my experience throughout my entire career that if the fire department comes to you and provides training and gives you ideas on things that can make you safer in your home environment or work environment, people pay attention to that and, and actually take us seriously, that, you know, if we're encouraging you to do something better that will be safer for your family or your coworkers, people really accept that knowledge. So I think that we need to use that opportunity even more. And what I'd like to see is, in the future, politicians holding us more accountable for that, instead of just focusing on our responses. We can be an effective tool to make the community safer through education and with skills and, you know, imparting knowledge and just simple reminders about smoke alarm checks and, you know, not catching your kitchen on fire while you're cooking. I mean, we have really good information to share, and we should do a better job of that. So I'm hoping the next administration that comes in will continue the work to expand those programs, because it is better for the community. I think that's all I can say.
Great, thank you. And then I guess your one last question, though, or additional question, is what do you hope that the department doesn't lose sight of? And maybe that's all wrapped in everything that you've already said, but I know I kind of asked it as a separate question, so I just wanted to make sure that if you had anything to add, that you had that opportunity.
I don't, I really hope the department doesn't lose sight of how important they are to the rest of the community. And we have definitely seen that through COVID, but we have seen it across the board my entire time with the department, of how well-respected and we are by the community. So I hope that we hang on to that and we continue to work towards making, improving that. And community risk reduction and injury prevention programs, those are a way to do that. But it's also all of the other things that we do in taking care of people above and beyond, besides just picking them up in ambulance and taking them to the doctor's office. Quite often, we get an amazing number of good intent and service calls, which are simple things of, you know, helping people when there's nobody left to help them. So I hope the department does not lose sight of that, because I think that's an important role that we fill in this community.
Thanks, Chief. That was, yeah, that's very important, like you said, to keep sight of. Okay, are there any questions or comments from members? I don't see anybody in the chat. But again, if there was anybody that we needed, needed a question asked at this point, this would be a good time. Well, thank you, Chief. I know you've got, you've got a couple more months. We're not letting you go yet. So I just We're not letting you go yet, so I just want to make sure that we're not ushering you out the door yet. So I'm sure we have some more things to talk about with the fire department in the next couple of, of months, with our next couple of Public Safety Committee meetings. So thank you very much. So we're going to move on to hearing from Chief Justin Dahl with the Anchorage Police Department. And it's really the same question, kind of what was your focus when you first came on board four years ago? And what do you hope the police department doesn't lose sight of after you've gone? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. You know, it was interesting, when we talked about this before, and I kind of started thinking about it, looking back, I mean, I think that everybody was really focused at that time when I took over on the department staffing. And I think that's primarily because, as a community, we were really focused on the increased level of crime that we were feeling. And, and there was, you know, a lot of discussion about the department being understaffed. And so, you know, we've really spent a lot of time as a community and as a department, you know, growing the department, adding officers, some of the, the same things that we talked about a little bit earlier in the meeting, where we've been adding staff to try to improve service levels. And, and I've had some success at doing that. You know, we also had some infrastructure needs that we kind of started to look at back then, but really, I would say that at that point, the primary focus was on that sort of basic service and making sure that we had enough people to get that done. Part of the staffing issue that we don't always talk about was morale and sort of officer and employee well-being. As a component of that, of course, any organization that is understaffed has everybody working extra essentially to try to meet sort of basic organizational goals. And I think that takes a real toll on morale and wellness. And so, you know, if I look at where we are now, you know, I think we've reached a lot of the staffing goals. We sort of transitioned our focus here on improving some of our infrastructure, our physical infrastructure. You know, a big piece of that was being able to occupy headquarters downtown. And now we're sort of pivoting to the follow-up to that, which is improving the structure at the Elmore Facility to be more useful for the police department. Those things are still ongoing. We've really spent a lot of time focusing a little bit more internally on employee well-being, wellness programs, peer support, things like that. Also, right now, we have been talking with the community and the administration, the Assembly, about some of our other sort of infrastructure needs, you know, not just the building stuff, but also our vehicle fleet needs some attention. And this is something that I think most people are aware of in this group, but we're just, you know, we have a large fleet to maintain, and it, it's getting to the point where we're, we're needing to replace a high number of vehicles. And of course, that's very expensive, and so finding a reasonable way to do that. You know, as I've talked about today, but also over the last month or two, you know, we've seen significant reduction in, in property crime and violent crime in Anchorage over the last year, year and a half, which is different than what a lot of the rest of the country is experiencing. So I think that's very good for our city. I would like to see that continue in the future. I certainly want us to maintain that momentum. We've had a lot of discussion about information technology systems at APD, everything from body worn cameras to the system that we use to write police reports and everything in between. Obviously, we all have talked about that a lot. There's an effort underway to, to modernize all of that, and I hope that continues into the future. Same thing with some, some of the infrastructure things. You know, COVID has presented lots of challenges over the last year or so, not the least of which is trying to get actual physical construction done. And so we're a little behind on some of those things, so I hope that continues. Something that's been happening, but I think is really still more of a future issue, is having the police department partner with behavioral health first responders and, you know, a crisis stabilization network inside the city, and really continuing to disengage the police department from being a service provider for those issues, and instead just being a good partner. I think that's going to be really important for the department, but also the community. So I hope we continue to work on that. You know, and just, as always, there's lots of irons in the fire. I hope that all those things continue, but those are kind of at a higher level, some of the things that I think that we've talked about over the last few years and worked on and had some success with and hope to continue with in the future. And as far as, you know, what I, I really hope the department doesn't lose sight of, and I think our department is very focused on this, and I hope they continue to be, is we recognize every person that works here every day, that we absolutely have to have the trust and faith of the people that live in Anchorage in order to do our jobs. And that is the, the basis upon which we build everything that we do. And I just hope that we continue to stay focused on that as we move into the future. I think it's important for everything else. And I think that's about it.
Thank you, Chief. Certainly appreciate those insights. And I would agree with you that obviously, public support for our first responders, all of them, is, is really critical. So appreciate that. I don't see any questions for you. So we're going to go ahead and move on to audience. Well, we have old, old business on our agenda, but I don't believe we have anything specific that we wanted to bring up. Certainly, any member can correct me if I'm wrong on that one. But I'd like to go ahead and move into audience participation and see who we've got. We do have somebody here in person, so I want to start off there. So welcome, Mr. Haberman.
My name is Eukene Carl Haberman. I'm known as the South Pointe Government watchdog. Today marks an occasion for the Assembly and the city in that two Assembly Committee meetings were held for the first time in this room, both the Assembly Health Committee and, and this one, the Assembly Public Safety Committee meeting. I applaud, finally, you having recognized my years of pleading with the Assembly to have these meetings here. Note for the record, the Rules Committee of the Assembly started appearing in this room a few months ago. Let's go with just briefly on that history before you went to this chapter and pre-COVID. These meetings were basically in a city hall, a small room. It, if the, the disengagement was clear from the public, because the public had to be physically in those meetings to listen to those meetings. The recordings would later be on the website for audio. And I, for years, I would have to say to Assembly members and so forth, please recognize yourself when speaking, so whoever listens to those audio recordings would know who's speaking, even years later. COVID came to the picture, and as you know, we've had quite a few ways of dealing with meetings, and they went remote, pretty much, except for the regular meetings of the Assembly. This room was special meetings of the Assembly as a whole. So this is very important, and I'm glad you took this direction, finally. I know there's bugs in the system, but taking this step is very important, and it speaks well that you took, finally took this step and shows the public that they have a way to connect with you more better, and you connect with the people more better. I close with these remarks, I did that in two minutes. So I close with these remarks and address the final statement from the police chief. And as you recall, for some time, I've been stating is, the policies and procedures for the police department, are they yet on the website? They were once there, they were taken down, and there has been excuses by our police chiefs that we, it's a work in progress and we have to work this scenario out. Now, I also like to remind you about those policy procedures from the police department. That was a result initially, when it finally did go on the website initially, was because of litigation and suits dealing with the municipality of Anchorage. So why is it that we're still blind and the public's still blind of what those policy procedures are? And not only that, who adopts them, how they're created, and when they went into effect, that's also important. And note what the message across the country is, is concerned about the process in dealing with the police and the public, and this is what we're going on with Anchorage, and this is not a positive step. Thank you, and my time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Haberman. I think we might have some in our Q and A as well, so can you help me with that, Ms. Anna?
There were no comments posted for the Q and A, but we have three phone calls, phone callers in. So the first one is going to end in 8640. You are unmuted if you'd like to speak.
No, thank you.
The next one is 1793. You are unmuted if you'd like to speak. If you'd like to speak, you're unmuted. And there is nobody else in the queue.
Thank you very much. Okay. So I guess the only comment I have then, before we wrap up, is that we will hear from Chief Tim Benningfield from the Chugiak Volunteer Fire Department next month, and just get an update from the volunteer department out in Chugiak. And I think we will ask, is that Mr. Constant?
It is. Thank you. I just wanted to speak the comment that the chief put into the chat, that the policies and procedures are on the website at this time. So any suggestion that they aren't is in fact inaccurate, according to the chief.
Thank you, Mr. Constant, for pointing that out. It's a lot of times hard to follow this chat, but anyway, thank you. So hopefully, everybody heard that, that it is on the website.
But not the APD.
So do we have any other comments, or can I make a motion to adjourn?
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate the attendance. Thank you. We are adjourned.